Supervisor Carol?
Here.
Supervisor Elias?
Mr. Seth.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Miller is?
Present.
Chair Bronson?
Here.
Let the record show members are present.
Please rise for the invitation to be led by Pastor Jeff Wells, Office of Church, Pastor of Counseling and the pledge of allegiance to follow to be led by Supervisor Elias.
Father, we know that you fill the universe and that you're here with us today. Give these men and women wisdom as they direct the course of important events in Tucson. And with each opinion expressed and each decision made, we ask that you would help understanding and act to prevail. We know that the outcomes of this meeting today will have ripple effects beyond what any of us can fully know. And we know that you love us and that these outcomes matter to you. So we ask for your blessing on this meeting and that your favor would abide upon each official. And we ask that Tucson will be the better for all that takes place here this morning. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Several changes to the agenda, the regular agenda, page three, item 12, it's transportation, and resolution 2015-11, staff is requesting that this item be removed from the agenda. And then on page, on the addendum agenda, page two, item four, under community development and neighborhood conservation, pay for success, resolution number 2015-12, staff is requesting that this item be removed from the agenda. If there are no objections from board members, the agenda will be, the regular agenda and the addendum agenda will be so moved in. Now, I want to introduce you to Soffa. Safa. Safa. Safi. And tell us a little bit about her, Officer.
Okay, this is Safi. And I don't know where she got the name. But she is just a loving dog. And she has kind of had a hard life. She was part of a major boarding case that PAC was involved with back in January. She was one that was kept in a five-by-five box, basically, 24/7. So needless to say, she loves being out of that box. We go for walks, we went down by the lake today, and she just thoroughly enjoys it. She's still dealing with some trust issues, and she's not real likely to come to you, but she does allow everyone to come to her. So it's one of these things, but, you know, she's just so soft and so loving, and we just need to do what we can to find her a good home. She has--
I think, Officer, we may have a good home right over there.
She, she will warm up to anyone. Today, after we went for our walk, we came back in, and I have to do emails for these and my other spots I do. And she just curled up right at my feet, and she was content to sit there until we were ready to go again. And I just think she would be a wonderful addition to someone's household that was willing to put time into her and spend time with her. Thank you.
Thank you. She's got a beautiful coat.
Oh, she's very soft.
We're now going to move on to call to the public. Let me remind you, you have three minutes. Please observe the rules of civility. And with that, Dennis Curry. Oh, I didn't see you out there. I'm looking for you.
Chair Bronson, the hopping area floor. The Star Valley specific plan, as it turns out, is this incredibly fireside development document, which describes the potential for a vibrant residential and commercial area in southwest Tucson. When I arrived in February 2006 from Rochester, New York, to search for home, affordable housing on the north side of Tucson due to market forces on home prices made homes in that area of Tucson totally unhorrible. A realtor directed me to my Whitney home in Star Valley, and my search was over. I was ultimately concerned for the availability of retail. However, I was assured that the community was designed to accommodate those retail services, and that a BASH's grocery market was under consideration. Please remember, this was 2006. Now fast forward to 2015, and still no BASHs or any retail whatsoever. Recognizing that 2006 was the peak of the housing level, and we suffered one of the worst economic downturns in recent history, we are now on the cusp of a recovery. All one needs to do is sit at the light at Wade Road in Valencia in the early morning hours, looking west at the continuous line of headlines that spread from points west make their way to jobs in Tucson. However, that only speaks to the residential component of the greater Star Valley. The commercial side has languished horribly. Today, we have a commercial opportunity available at the corner of Wade and Valencia that has been 10 years in the making with one sticky point. It is our community's understanding that a median cut decision is between our moving forward or living with the status quo. Key breed gators, who would be anchor stores for this site, require this amendment to our Valencia road improvement to consider investing here. The developer, we understand, has agreed to fund these changes to design and facilitate this decision. The design recommendations would fall within all express safety specifications required by ADAP. Our coming government leadership is critical in helping to resolve this perceived impasse from the community homeowner's perspective. We cannot underscore the need to address the infrastructure requirements to support the growth of our neighborhoods. We understand that at one time a YNCA was proposed. I can assure you, we are past the point of developing an obvious solution for our union. I'll be the first to admit that I do not have the backstory for the current ongoing disagreements that exist between the developer and our coming government. However, as your constituents and as taxpayers, we expect and require our coming leadership to rise above those issues and find a common ground that results in a fair and equitable solution that honors division. The Star Valley specific plan describes. Your consideration and two will be respectfully addressed.
Thank you, Dennis. Jerry Otoboni.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Otoboni. I live in Old Valley. And let me see, you individuals from the arts community who came here last meeting to support a $640 million bond are like locusts trying to strip the already burdened taxpayer here in the sixth poor city in the county, or sixth poor city in the country with the fifth worst roads in the country. Shame on you. Seniors with those on fixed income and other families on fixed income and families with children who are struggling in this bad economy can't afford to go to the symphony because they're trying to put food on their tables. But you want a bond for $640 million that will force these landlords, if they are renting, to raise the rent. Seniors, because their property taxes again have been raised, possibly forcing some of them out of their homes. People who attend the theater and symphony can afford to pay their own way. Many of these groups already receive grants and federal grants, yet you greedy individuals want to take more out of the pockets of the taxpayer. You groups with your outstretched hands must think there's a money tree hidden somewhere in the sixth poorest city with the fifth poorest streets in the country. I want to commend those groups who have private fundraisers and are not asking for money on the backs of the taxpayer. Perhaps you should contact some of these groups and learn how to raise money privately. Your patrons should become involved and support a fundraiser rather than spending money on a $640 million bond. The opera and the theater have tickets like $78, depending on the seating and performance. I am sure your patrons would not mind adding a few dollars to their ticket price to provide for the money that they're asking for. To state that this $640 million bond will bring businesses to Pima County is wrong. It's a pipe dream. What are you people on? Open up your eyes and look at the roads, the fifth worst roads in the country. They look like a third world country, and there's no money for roads. The roads are in a horrible condition due to years of nonessential spending and putting our road repair money into fund for your pet projects. The highly overpaid Huckleberry with his $320,000 salary plus benefits with less than 1 million citizens is $100,000 more than AmeriCopa County with 4.5 million citizens. Must have told all of you with your hands out that Pima County can, with the bond, provide unlimited funds to support your pet projects. That's not true. We are already in debt 1.3 million, billion, sorry, not million, billion, which is two times more than all the other counties combined. So Mr. Huckleberry wants to purchase more land, $90 million, that will take the land taxes off the tax rolls--
Ms. Otoboni, your time has expired. Christopher Cole.
Good morning. I am Christopher Cole of Tucson, Arizona. One of the nuts of that. As the first vice chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party, I'd like to point out something that was just pointed out. There's possibly, I think it's 35,000 counties or county equivalents in America, and our roads rank fifth worst. That is a distinction that you should be hanging in your head, sin-shamed with. When I was on active duty, we had a phrase to describe your conduct on this issue. It's called dereliction of duty. Indeed, an argument could be made that in whole or part, if you accept your salary while these roads are kept in the condition that they are, you're committing fraud against the taxpayers of Pima County. I'm not going to make that argument, other people can make it. The roads are pathetic. The roads need to be repaired, rebuilt. Otherwise, an argument could be made, a class action lawsuit could be made for all the damage that you're doing to taxpayers' cars and businesses' cars, to the economic harm you're doing to this county. Please, get off your thumbs and fix the roads. This is an essential duty of the Pima County Board of Supervisors, the county government. Perform it. Get these roads fixed. You don't need to be constantly buying land and taking it off the tax rolls for open space or whatever. You need to fix the roads. You need to put your priorities in order. And the Pima County Board of Supervisors has three basic duties. Manage the money that you take from the taxpayers efficiently, set priorities, and set policy. On two of those three, you get a failing grade. Thank you.
Supervisor Carol, you wanted to point the personal privilege.
Thank you, Chairman. Madam Chair. Obviously, today, we join in sorrow with the family of Richard Elias for the passing of Ivan Valde, the matriarch of their family, Richard's mother-in-law. Richard's mother-in-law was not only the matriarch of the family of eight children, she was also the loving and devoted grandmother of eight, of six children, of six grandchildren as well. Obviously, the folks at St. Pierre and Paul will be in sorrow as her services are given. But obviously, all of us at the board are affected and feel your loss, Richard. Hope that her steadfast loyalty to the church and the suffering that she had was now lifted, and she is in the kingdom of God. I also realize that all your family, especially your wife and daughter, have experienced a significant loss, and we wish them the very deepest of condolences and recovering and healing in this difficult time. I know that Ivan Valde was a fan of the Russian author Leo Tolstoy, Dostoevsky, and I think the kingdom of God is within you is a very symbolic writing of Tolstoy, which reflects very much her passion for religion and the faith that brought her to be the steadfast and capable, loving parent and grandparent that she was. God bless her sacred memory. I know she only passed yesterday, and we appreciate you being here this time.
Thank you, Supervisor Carol. And I think Supervisor Elias, you know all our prayers and condolences are with you and your family at this time. Edmund Marquez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Edmund Marquez. Great to see you. I'll be very sorry to hear about your mother-in-law. Sorry to hear about that. On a positive note, I'm here to say thank you. So thank you for your work on the Sonoran Corridor. Thank you for supporting Raytheon. As we all know, the big three in our community, Raytheon, U of A, Davis-Montana Air Force Base, this, everything we're talking about here today and hearing about with roads and everything else we hear about comes down to jobs. So we thank you for protecting our, especially Raytheon, one of our big threes. We appreciate that. I'm also a member of the Southern Arizona Leadership Council. We wanted to say, again, thank you, because anything we can do to help support business in Tucson provides jobs, which then people can pay taxes, and then when we pay taxes, we're there to, we can obviously fix our roads and do other things in this community. So that's a big piece of it. I do support the bond package. I just hope, obviously, that we're fiscally responsible with it. Again, we're hearing about roads. I hope that we take care of the most important pieces first, which it sounds like infrastructure. If you hear about what's going on from its, whether it's federal, whether it's state, whether it's local, where our, in the United States, we have crumbling infrastructure everywhere, from bridges to roads. And obviously, I hope, obviously, between Pima County, city of Tucson, RTA funds, hopefully we can get a good grip on that. But we do support the bond package, and hopefully we can move it forward to about this fall. But I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the business community, and I like your economic development package as well. Just keep, keep helping us provide more jobs. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Anheiden.
Good morning. My name is Keith Anheiden. I'm a Tucson resident. And if I were a rich man, which I am, I stand against your bond initiative, because what is it? It's a group of your handpicked friends deciding who's going to make money, on what? These are projects you couldn't have put in the budget for the last 15 or 20 years that most of you have been sitting here. Guess what? That makes you the problem. You are the corruption. You're the failure. You're the treason to your own society. And hopefully, we don't have any more needless interruptions. Everybody's parents die, that's a tragedy, but it happens. We, we know it's coming. But when we take this type of bond initiative and ram it down to people's throats using televised media, the newspaper, social media, so we can tax ourselves into slavery for you who have failed? You've heard of the roads. Come on, you're weighing off Rosemont. You're fighting that still. The city fights off a Christian university, for God's sake. You know why? Because it doesn't fit Tucson values. I've got to ask, what is Tucson values? What the hell are they? Is it slavery? Is it poverty? Because that's all I see you doing to the city. I drive around a lot. I deal with a lot of different people. I travel the country, I travel the world. My God, this place is pathetic. 15 years ago, when I moved here, if I would have known the situation, I would have told my wife to not take the job at the hospital. Plain and simple, we would have gone to California or Hawaii. We stayed in the country to be near her family. Sorry, mine's all dead and buried in Arlington. It comes down to this: you're incompetent, you're immoral. As far as I'm considered, you know, concerned, the county is acting as a group of thieves. You're blackmailing your community into, "Well, we're going to pass this bond." Well, that's good. Well, now we need another bond for roads. Really? Because people like me, "Oh, we're leaving. My wife's got three more years to retire." "We're leaving. I'm taking my business with me, my 10, 15 employees." "Have them in this life, everybody. Keep voting for your own slavery."
Pat Engels.
Good morning. I'm Pat Engels. I am treasurer of the Arizona Sonoran Desert Museum, and I have the privilege also being chair for two years previously. And I'm here to speak to the bond. Thank you for your support thus far, and perhaps shed a little light on my, I think it's important. I think it's an economic development issue. As you know, the museum brings in a significant amount of tourism into the city of Tucson, the state of Arizona, which I think is really the most important thing that we should focus on, is economic development. I have a corporate background prior to becoming a community volunteer, and I spent quite a few years, '12 and '13, at United Airlines, where I was responsible for marketing development for the Arizona market back in the '90s. And it really is one of our most important drivers of tourism here in the, in the city, since we are known, the museum, throughout the world, throughout the United States. And I think an investment in the museum, and it is an investment, is an investment in Tucson. It's not just a giveaway. And we try to be good corporate citizens as well by giving discounts to the local community. And we do, in fact, do a significant amount of fundraising. As you all, I think, are aware, when we received the last fund of money, we went out and raised significant money, not just to match, but to exceed for all the development that we have done. So I would tell you, as a former corporate executive and as a business person and as a citizen here in Tucson and somebody who is accountable to delivering the best museum quality product, that I would encourage you to really support the museum and the bond. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy Newman.
I'm Nancy Newman. I live in Oral Valley. I really don't want to be negative, but Pima County practices big fish in small pond. This is not the time to issue a bond. Our economy has not come back. Businesses continue to close. Landlords are still decreasing and renegotiating rents, trying to keep their tenants until better times, but yet their taxes continue to go up. Marketers, managers, and those who pay taxes are working 24/7 because of technology and the pressure to perform in a six-year recession that still isn't moving. They're trying to keep their jobs and still have a life. I don't know how the elderly are making it with little to no income and for what they have left. Ally Miller may be the only supervisor that understands finances in Pima County. Also, at, right now, this bond issue can't be, because our future is damned with the redistribution of wealth, high unemployment, entitlement mentality, net neutrality, Agenda 21, Common Core, and all the other Marxist moves coming down from Washington, DC, and the possibility of amnesty for millions making more people to support, plus the constant fear and headlines of terrorism. Our future just isn't there right now to put ourselves in the line for another bond issue. The public is too strapped to pass this bond issue, and on top of all this, the public has lost face and faith and credibility of the Pima County Board of Supervisors, fearing that the bond money will again be squandered on projects not intended. The public's safety, welfare, and security should be foremost in your minds as supervisors so that the citizens of Pima County can sleep well and continue to try to get ahead in a mindset that only wants to tax, take, control, and destroy. You've got to consider, number one, our roads, but you've got to consider the welfare of your citizens in Pima County. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Anderson.
Good morning, all. Thank you. I can go once and for all. I'm here to speak on behalf of the bond issue. I'm in favor of it. I'm a trustee of meritite of the Tucson Museum of Art, the board of directors of the museum, its constituency, and the vast majority of its members all support the coming bond issue and hope you folks will let it go forward. And I appreciate all you do for the community, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Farver Levin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Huckleberry, and Supervisors. As I invite your support of the Puma County bond package, I wish to specifically endorse the TCC Today project that will provide the completion of the renovation of the Tucson Community Center. People have been drawn to the newly renovated arena and convention center. However, looking north, it is far less inviting. Now is the time for change. The proposed revisions to this campus are not limited to the city of Tucson, but provide space and upgraded facilities for county-wide use. Symphony patrons have voiced ongoing concerns over the conditions of the hall. They don't realize until we tell them that we don't own the property, and they need to advocate with city officials. At the present time, this project is the city's second priority included in the Puma County bond package and the only resource that will enable vitally important improvements to the music hall, including seats, a music show, and an updated acoustic environment. Two years ago, the Urban Land Institute recommended the renovation of the historic Echo landscape needed to complete the revitalization of downtown. Our community has made significant investments of time and resources to improve our city. The proposed project will further enhance these investments in that of the modern street car directly, passing directly by the complex. A completed update of the cultural campus and its facilities will successfully attract business and tourism, as well as providing an inviting venue for the community activities. In addition, the completion of this project will increase the surrounding property values and result in a significant increase in tax revenues. Finally, the proposed bond issue has an extraordinarily wide reach in Pima County. This time, the opportunity to enhance our downtown will attract county-wide voter support. The time is now. Pima County can't afford to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Micah Bain. Is it Micah or Micah?
Mike. Name for the minute. Good morning. That's how I pronounce. Thank you. I appreciate it, Chair. I'm sorry about your loss, sir. My name's Micah Bain, and I am vice president of client services for a large insurance broker here in town. I have been privileged to be a Tucsonian for five years, came here from, excavated myself from Cleveland, Ohio. I'm so excited. And during the five years that we've had the privilege of living here, I've become immersed in the community, serve on a number of boards, and do a fair amount of work with various charitable groups. I'm here today to talk about the bond, in support of the bond effort. I am vice chair of the Reed Parks Geological Society Board, and we feel very strongly that the zoo, as well as many other members of the charitable community here in town, bring a great deal of tourism to our community, to our town and to our county. We feel that the expansion of the projects that are on the list will increase the viability of our community and, so lazy might sound, we've all been to the zoo. We've all been to the zoo. You walk around, what do you see? You see families. You see families smiling. Stand out there on a Saturday morning and watch those children with Nandi out in the Elephant Park, and how can you help but say, "This is a great investment"? And the same for many other projects on that list. Things that families can do together within our community that benefits for us not only in additional construction jobs, but in tourism, for our restaurants, for our community services. And it makes Tucson a wonderful place to live. And I feel so privileged and so humbled to be able to live here. I'm asking you to move this bond issue forward, onto the ballot this fall. Let our voters decide if it's the way that they would like to spend their money. Thank you so very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Dwayne Bernard.
Good morning, Councilman. My name is Dwayne Bernard. I live in Pima County, and I'm the president of a management consulting company that specializes in turnaround companies. I'm also the president of a specialty sports equipment company. I am a board member of the Reed Parks Geological Society. I'm a board member of various entities, including a hospital, church, and other national parks. My wife is Krista Johnson, a professional golfer on the LPGA, who currently still plays on the student tour. I have been fortunate, through my companies and through my wife's international golf tournaments, to have traveled around the world. In my travels, I've been to zoos in China, India, South Africa, Europe, South America, and the United States. The great zoos of the world are always, always reinvesting in themselves. I first visited the Reed Park Zoo in 1968 when I was 10 years old. Through the foresight and wisdom of your predecessors at both county and city levels, our zoo has enjoyed the early 50 years of reinvestments, joy, and growth. I've often brought my out-of-town visitors to the zoo to showcase the many wonders and the beauty of our county, our city, and our zoo. Investment in our zoo has resulted in economic growth through construction projects, increased employment directly at the zoo through support operations, and through continued enjoyment and amazement of the zoo for our citizens. I respectfully request the Board of Supervisors place on the ballot the bond initiative so that we continually reinvest in our zoo for growth, for jobs, for enjoyment, for grandchildren, our children, and ourselves. Thank you very much, supervisors and supervisors. That's our last and very sweet closing statement.
Thank you. Damian Alexander.
Richard, I've become very good friends with your nephew Ben, and he's very active with Epic Rise and the cycling community with the Belladrome, which I'm also here speaking for. And the apple does not fall far from the tree. So, my condolences and all around your family and what you've done for Tucson, for Puma County, and my hat is tipped to you. So, thank you very much.
I am here to speak on behalf of the bond election, and first of all, as a Realtor, I'm with One Realty, have been for 20 years. And the economic impact that all of the items on the bond are gonna bring to Tucson, what it's gonna do for the tax base, what it's gonna do for bringing money back into our community, bringing new businesses here. The old adage, "You've gotta spend money to make money." And we have an opportunity right now. Actually, we have an opportunity right now at a phenomenal time, because the last time I checked, interest rates were pretty low, which means the money we're gonna be borrowing, it's gonna be a lot lower than if we wait two, three, four years. Just say 1%, $600 million bond, $6 million a year. What do we, 20 years to pay it back? Adds up. It's a lot of money. So now is the time. I'm speaking also on behalf of the Arizona Bicycle Center for the Belladrome. I am a huge cycling advocate. It's wonderful. You go out of the loop, which I think should at the end be renamed the Chuck Huckleberry Loop. Thank you so much for all of your efforts on what you've done there. It's great seeing Chuck out there every weekend, riding his bike, and so many others. And the health, what it does, Julia from Tucson Medical Center, who's here. You know, those kind of investments in our community, you know, keeping a healthy population, reinvesting, that's what we're asking for today. For you to put this bond election, to give the citizens an opportunity to vote on this. I've created a couple of spreadsheets and questionnaires that have been emailed out, and it's just starting, but so far in one, we have 900 people in support. The other one's about 220. Hopefully, in the next meeting, I'll come back and tell you it's thousands, thousands, and thousands, because everyone I'm hearing from, except for three people in Tucson, aren't supportive of this. So, please, let's put this on there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patricia, and I can't read. Is it Dent? Dart?
Dent.
Dent, okay.
Good morning. My name's Patricia Dent. I grew up in Tucson. Graduated from Tucson High, went to U of A, and I'm sorry for your loss. Over the past few months, when I've come here, I've heard a lot of people want a piece of the pie. I'm not against all the great things we have. And then, oh, I'm proud of the, I like the symphony, the zoo, and all of these other things, Tucson Temple Music and Art. The thing that, and of course, we have to do all of our roads, we've gotta balance our budget too, and be, really look at our money and scrutinize what we have. I truthfully am against a lot of these new projects, because how can we do huge new ones unless we're sure that we can sustain what we pass and what we build? Because I feel that's really important. I feel what we have in Tucson is great. We've got a lot of good things, yes. I've come back here. I do play a little bit of snowbird in the summer, because my daughter had the adassia, and moved to Grand Rapids. How dare she, with my grandchildren. Once I, I taught school, and once I retired, you know, you gotta be by those grandchildren. But that's basically what I wanted to say. I don't know if the people would vote for it. I have a lot of friends that will not vote for it. Not just the three you've heard for the bond issue because of the immense cost of it. And my, I just received a notice yesterday, my house went up $20,000 in a year. I don't really agree with that. But anyway, just think carefully, balance what we have. Tucson's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Becker.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. Tucson is a great place, and it deserves great things. I'm a musician in the Tucson Symphony Orchestra, and I'm also chair of the Musicians Committee. You had your chance. I have been a member of the TSO in this community for 14 years now. And as a professional musician, I have performed all over the world in many venues, and I can tell you that the music hall is among the worst. It is somewhat dilapidated. I've also played in Hawaii. I live there, and they have plenty of problems too. It is amongst the worst. It is dilapidated, antiquated, dysfunctional for the performers. If the music hall were a road, it would be full of potholes, constantly. More importantly, it is unacceptable for the audience members who attend. I have met many people in the community in my 14 years here who have expressed the desire to come here to the TSO, but either limit their attendance or don't come of awe because of the poor functionality of the building, shabby appearance, and the lack of amenities, and of course, the poor acoustics. The performing arts facilities in this city are not worthy of this city that is known as the birthplace for the arts in Arizona. And it seems logical that upgrades to the performing arts facilities should be consistent with any new urban development of downtown. I am certain improvements to these facilities will attract and retain many more patrons, which means money, as well as provide a proper environment for our home orchestra and any guest artists who perform here. Please put this bond issue to the public for vote. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Carla Van Drew in Latuie.
I'm Carla Van Drew in Latuie, co-founder of the community voluntary organization, TCC Today. We advocate the restoration of the community center that is our TCC Convention Center. As we have worked to build a coalition amongst our partners here in the philanthropic community and to understand similar projects nationwide, I've been making a lot of contacts, and I want to share with you a conversation that I had recently with a fellow in Oklahoma City, because I think they have a very similar experience to ours. So I just wanted to share this with you. So I talked with Jim Brown, who has for over 20 years...
You want him? You can set that down.
Over here?
No, no, on the table. And we can broadcast it.
Oh, okay. I'll let you work on that. So for over 20 years, Jim has led the Civic Center Music Hall in Oklahoma City. When he got there in 1993, he had a hall with two facilities very similar to ours and four resident companies, also very similar to ours. He found that facility in absolutely dilapidated condition, and the acoustics were, as we have in our, there we go, in our music hall, not favorable for the musicians or the audience. They decided to reduce their seats from 3,200 to 2,477, and in $1,998, they spent $52.4 million. What I really want to focus on here are the results. He has been told by colleagues nationwide that they have national prominence now. In fiscal 2014, he was able to book 300 days. And for our theaters in fiscal '14, we booked less than half of that. Part of that was the management company. Part of that is the condition of the facility, because they're not appropriate for many presentations. He has $25 million of economic impact that he can track. His patrons spend $75 each beyond their ticket price. If I can use my few seconds left, let me tell you a story that he shared. A few weeks ago, James Taylor came through on a national tour, and when he greeted him and his manager, he said, "Mr. Taylor, you're gonna have an experience like no other at our theater. The acoustics are amazing." And very politely, Mr. Taylor scoffed. But at his second song, he stopped, and he looked at the county and city officials sitting in the audience, and he said, "Thank you." Mr. Brown was right. I have never played a hall like this anywhere. This kind of opportunity has allowed Oklahoma City to introduce new audiences to resident companies and to increase their number of visitors. They have between 300,000 and 400,000 visitors to that Civic Center Music Hall every year. We could do something very similar. Please give us the chance.
Thank you. Jim Cook.
Good morning. My name is Jim Cook. I'm here, wearing two hats today, as a nearly lifelong resident of Tucson and as the executive director of the Western National Parks Association. I'm here to speak in favor of the bonds, and I urge you to consider very favorably the upcoming bond election. There's two aspects to the bond election as I look at it. Number one, it's the parks, it's the museums, it's the theaters that often stimulate kids and have those aha moments in their life that really do change their lives. So the value proposition, in my way of thinking, is very much that these are educational resources. And the projects that have been supported by the bonds in the past and those that will ultimately be proposed for 2015 truly represent those opportunities for the future. Those are the, this is our future. The kids are our future. And when they have those opportunities, those kinds of opportunities do change their lives. Certainly changed my life. As a kid who didn't have a whole lot of direction, it was the theater that really got me going and kept me going in life. So, I really think that as you consider the bond election, think about our children and the opportunities that you will be creating for them. The other part, equally important, perhaps more important, is the economic development opportunity. The math is simple. Tourism, travel is clearly our biggest economic engine for this region. And we've not done enough to promote our amazing resources in this region, whether they be natural, cultural, or historic. These resources are world-class. And I think we have a tremendous opportunity to promote the region even more, bring even more visitors in. And again, simple math shows us that those tourism dollars really do bring in a lot of revenue to our community. And I think we're well-positioned now to increase that greatly. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Bonnie Kappa.
Good morning. I'm Bonnie Kappa, and I'm delighted to be here. Thank you, Chairwoman Bonson and supervisors, for giving us a chance to speak. I'm here representing the Tucson Symphony Orchestra as the board chair, the chair of the trustees. And I was here two weeks ago and mentioned that our board and our organization is very supportive and would work to get out the votes in the fall for the Puma County bond package. So I just wanted to give you an update. We have not been sitting passively. You'll hear a lot of the communications that we've been doing with our partners and our patrons. But in our board meeting last week, we officially approved a resolution that the Tucson Board of Trustees will support the Puma County bond package to put it out to the voters in the fall, and that we will advocate to make sure that there are improvements that are made to the city-owned music hall, and we'll do whatever we can to get out the vote to support your efforts. So, thank you so much, and I hope to see you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Bowles, sir.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. We moved here four years ago from Madison, Wisconsin. We chose the Tucson area because of its cultural and ethnic richness. We have become very involved with the Tucson Symphony Orchestra and believe it's one of the best orchestras in the country. While in Madison, I served as an elective office at the city level. So I understand what you're going through in trying to keep all of these ducks in a row. I also know how difficult it is to try to protect your resources and your assets. I know that's why you probably appointed this bond committee to put together a number of projects that could be supported by the community. And I certainly do support putting this bond package to the people for a vote. Just as the Sonoran Corridor hopefully will engender new business to come here and help retain business that exists, it's fairly commonly known or understood that accessibility to the arts also is a big factor in retaining and attracting new business. 10 years ago, Madison opened a new performing arts center. And during the 10-year period, when, between the time it was in the planning process and the time it was opened, the properties around, in a four-block area around the new center, increased in value by 400%. Now, that involves some reconstruction and also a lot of new construction. We think the same potential exists for Tucson, and I hope you will let the people decide on this bond package. Thank you.
Thank you. Alana Henderson.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, supervisors, and my condolences to you and your family. I'm here as a native Tucsonian and a small business person. I've lived in this community. I've watched it grow. I've watched its successes. I've watched its failures. And I cannot speak in support at any level for a bond at this time. I'm not against all these wonderful things that I've enjoyed growing up as well. However, I will say that we do not have a firm foundation. We have not honored our structural obligations with the money that we've been given as good stewards, as far as my concern for the Board of Supervisors and what their role in our government is here locally. The fact that a lot of people have great opportunities to speak is a privilege, and I do appreciate that. But I want to represent the fact that you cannot continue to squeeze blood from a stone, pardon the expression. However, you know, when we speak to the fact that philanthropy is not prohibited at any level or any measure, you can continue to raise funds for all of these wonderful special interest groups, but your job... interest groups, but your job as the board, representing an entire county, should be cohesive. It should be addressing the fact that our infrastructure is crumbling and failing. You can have a diamond in the middle of the desert, but will people drive past those potholes that we've all heard extensively about and ignore that fact? I find it hard to believe that you ignore that fact. You know, that is really important. These are small businesses that cannot continue to pay higher taxes, they cannot continue to support. So if the whole concept of tourism and attracting people to these wonderful things is to replace the current tax base with a whole new tax base, then why don't you be transparent about that? Because it is not protecting what is currently here, what you currently represent. And that, I believe, is your first and foremost obligation. So I would appreciate it if you would take that into consideration because we are the people who vote for you, we're the people that you represent, first and foremost. And, you know, there is, there is no proof in that you are not overlooking it when we do look at the roads as we drive through. The economy comes first, but you can't have an upside-down pyramid and pretend that just paving over the roads right before an election in a specified district isn't looking out for special interests. Look out for the entire community. That would be my personal request on behalf of your grandchildren and mine. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark Blakeman.
Good morning. Mr. Leis Meine, condolences. I'm Mark Blakeman. I'm President and CEO of the Tucson Symphony Orchestra. To the Board of Supervisors, thank you for your commitment to our wonderful community. I applaud your challenging work and diligent efforts to better our community. The Tucson Symphony is dedicated to the promotion and advocacy of this bond issue and we would ask that you support this initiative. In recent weeks, the symphony has distributed more than 4,000 leaflets, given verbal testimony to more than 5,000 concert goers, and distributed email communications to 12,000 symphony patrons requesting their advocacy for this important initiative. More importantly, alignment among our sister organizations has occurred as the Reed Park Zoological Society, Tucson Museum of Art, Arizona Sonora Desert Museum, Arizona Theater Company, TCC Today, Tucson Children's Museum, and others join together to demonstrate support of this important and critical opportunity to invest in our community. Improved facilities translate into increased attendance and experiences, such as a 35% increase in attendance for user groups of the Overture Center in Madison, Wisconsin. This initiative helps organizations increase program offerings and education opportunities, such as the twofold increase in music education programs of the Nashville Symphony after the completion of a facility in their community. In Oklahoma City, investment of more than $1.6 billion through their MAPS program, Metro Area Planning Project since 1991, has sparked a renaissance of their downtown community and improved or erected construction projects throughout the city and poured more than $500 million into public schools called MAPS for Kids. In 2015, Oklahoma City ranked the 15th fastest-growing city by Forbes and ranked 10th by Forbes among the best states for businesses. There are shining examples of communities across our country that have invested in themselves, spurring on economic growth, creating jobs, and generating depth to their communities and quality of life. I urge you to please support the bond initiative by giving it your yes vote and allowing the citizens of this community to cast their votes in November 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Erickson.
Good morning. I'm Helen Erickson, excuse my voice. And I'm representing both TCC Today and the Tucson Historic Preservation Foundation. I would like to speak in favor of the bond. The ECO designed landscape, which is the campus of the Tucson Community Convention Center, is one of the most valuable resources we have in downtown. It was designed by a world-known architect. We could never possibly replace such a valuable center today. And I would like to say that we have an enormous coalition that supports this. 30-plus organizations and individuals are actively supporting the inclusion of this project and bond. It is vital to achieving the objectives of the 2013 Plan Tucson, which includes a recommendation of the management of important landscapes in perpetuity. It also recommends the kind of cooperative effort among public, private, and philanthropic entities that have been so characteristic of this undertaking from the beginning. The Urban Land Institute's 2013 Advisory Services Panel Report on Downtown Tucson recommended the renovation of the center as a linchpin for the revitalization of Tucson's downtown. I would like to look at this not only as a historic landscape, but as the largest area of green space in downtown at 5.75 acres. The economic value of green space is often underrated. However, green space has a positive impact on adjacent property values. It reduces the urban heat island effect. Contact with nature increases worker productivity. Green space encourages business growth. Well-kept parks enhance business districts. Green space reduces crime. And green space itself boosts tourism. So in addition to the 3,000 people who attended Modernism Week, many from out of town, we assume that this number will continue to grow over the next few years and be a valuable draw to a community like ours with amazing modernist heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Blake Eager.
Hi, how's it going? Sorry about your loss. My name is Blake Eager and I was going to come up with a specific script, but after listening to everybody talk from both ends of it, I'm going to kind of go off my story a little bit. I'm a former baseball player, professional baseball in Southern Arizona. I grew up in Falling Walls, which I think everybody understands is one of the lower districts or lower areas of Tucson. And there's not a lot of opportunities for youth out there. And so everybody's speaking about different things here today. I'm going to speak from a youth aspect. Baseball and softball will and continue to be the largest sport in Southern Arizona. And we've been able to do a lot of great things. We have all-stars in Major League Baseball right now, we have professional athletes from a softball standpoint. What we don't have is a home. We're spread out, there's field usage that we don't have. It's one of those things where we keep trying to do something. And I know that Tucson, Southern Arizona, is very upset with Major League Baseball leaving, but that doesn't directly affect us as a youth aspect unless we don't have a home and we don't right now. And we support this bond. I'm the Director of the largest baseball organization, youth baseball organization in Southern Arizona. I also sit on the Board of Tucson Youth Baseball Association, which I think everybody's heard Shelly Duncan talk a couple of times. I'm in the role of kind of taking over right now for him as he leaves. I think what we'd like to see is this bond to pass and actually give us a chance to hold tournaments in Southern Arizona. And be able to bring youth baseball and youth softball from around the world, use Visit Tucson, use our extended network of resources and bring these teams in and hold something and host something that's very important to Southern Arizona, and that's baseball and softball. And in doing so, you'll obviously see a direct economic impact. If you look up to our neighbors up north, they continue to do this on a weekend basis over and over and it's a saturated product of this. People want to leave, but there's nowhere to go right now. And what we want to try to do is create something, a home for youth baseball and youth softball, to allow them to come down and for us to have a voice in the communities, specifically in Southwest, giving us a chance to truly represent our sport. And that's about all I have to say, just so you guys understand how important it is growing forward, moving forward, and giving our youth a chance to actually educate themselves, move on to college, get a scholarship, not have to burden the parents with a constant economic burdens, the loans that they have to pay afterwards. There's chances out there in the Midwest and Northeast sight unseen that will take our players and give them college scholarships. That's really important for us, Southern Arizona. So I'd like to see us support this and put it on the package and get a vote for it and see where it goes from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rick Renell.
Madam Chair, backstory I wanted to mention. Shelly Duncan is going to be back. He's currently coaching in the Diamondbacks organization up in Hillsboro, Oregon. So thanks, Blake, for being here.